Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colasor.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move to approve the minutes of the April 23, 2012 regular meeting as prepared and submitted by the clerk.
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasor.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to this council meeting. We had a good lengthy discussion on the CIC. We're going to be coming back in two weeks, which is on a Tuesday, since Monday is a holiday on, I think it's May 29. Will be our next Finance and Council meeting. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report at this time.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening, but I will be scheduling a meeting as soon as I talk to the members.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you. And the Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colasor.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Thank you. Request for council action. We have several items for the Finance Committee. We have Item 1281, which is an advance request for Senator Turnley for Lake Road to the railroad track. 1282, transfer requests, parking fund. 1283, budget amendments. 1284, income tax review board. 1285, fire bond retirement fund transfer. 1286, ODOT salt purchasing program. 1287, annual fireworks display. 1288, fiscal year 2012 CDBG application. 1289, certified local government. 1290, Farmers Exchange 320 South Court landmark designation. 1291, NOWACA funding bicycle streetscape programs. 1292, renamed Commerce Drive extension. 1293, trail easement, Champion Creek multipurpose path. 1294, Falling Oaks Drive drainage and storm sewer easement. 1295, bids for the Ray Mallard splash pad and public restroom. 1296, agreement for the municipal airport engineering agreement. 1297, advance request US EPA Brownfield grant. 1298, Wellness Services Agreement, Montana Hospital and Finley. 1299, fair market value estimates for the easement for Champion Creek Trail. Reports from municipal officers, Mayor Hanrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. A number of things tonight. Rand McNally and USA Today are looking for the best small hometown and the best place in America. The administration thinks that Medina is both of those, and we're asking residents to vote for Medina. The voting closes tomorrow. Channel 5 came down and covered it, not on their video portion, but on their web portion, and residents need to go in to vote. The two websites are for the best of the small, or for the best small hometown, www.bestoftheroad.com/town. And then it's the same thing for the Uptown Park being the best place, www.bestoftheroad.com-place. And again, the voting closes tomorrow. The Upper Chippewa Creek Watershed Balanced Growth Plan was approved by the state of Ohio on April 24, 2012. Like to personally thank Councilman Mark Colasor, who represented the city of Medina on this committee. There's copies in the mayor's office and the council office. A copy was dropped off for the president and Councilman Mark Colasor, both. On Monday, May 7, Medina County Treasurer John Burke will launch the 11th year for fix-it home fund improvement loan programs. These are interest rates 3% below the normal bank rates for repairs or home improvements. Some of the stipulations are the home value must be less than $200,000, not including the land. Some of the limitations are no pools, hot tubs, unattached garages or sheds. Five-year loans are available from the low end of $1,500 to the upper end of $50,000. There's no income restrictions. You must be current on your real estate taxes. Funds are first come, first served, and applications are available at the following banks, Huntington Bank, Key Bank and US Bank. And if there's questions, you can call John Burke's office at 725-9746. Friday, June 1, Medina Community Band Concerts start. They'll be each Friday for June and July, as well as July 4, which is a Wednesday this year, and the band concerts start at 8:30 each evening. This is a great community event for families. They're free, there's no charge. For further information, you can go to the Community Band website, which is www.madinacommunityband.org. And lastly, Jazz Under the Stars are other free concerts on the square that is supported by Ormaco and merchants and businesses from the square area. And the concerts are scheduled for Saturday nights, June 9, June 7, August 12, and September 1. And the concerts are from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Again, these are free, there's no charge. And there is further information, if you're interested in who the particular jazz band is on a particular night, at www.Ormaco.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to talk briefly about the budgets. As you know, we are in our budget process already. We, the process, what the department heads are working on right now is for those funds, excluding the general fund, which we do later in the year after we get halfway through the year, so we know how our half-year revenues look, we're able to update the revenue estimate for those. And we're also excluding the ones that we already did, which are the enterprise funds and the internal service funds. The department heads are working on those. A number of them have already been turned into me. Other than the ones that were turned in earlier today, I've gotten those all back to the department heads to look over before they're, to counsel. They're due to me by the 20th of May, and then from me to counsel by the 1st of June, and we'll be moving forward on those with counsel in June and July. Additionally, Utility Rate Review Committee will be meeting again on June 12. I want to thank Don Conwell for helping to put together that meeting and getting all the time set up. And then there's a couple of things on the agenda that came with, that came from Finance with advances and transfers that I'll address when we get there.
Thank you. And I know that department heads are looking forward to budgets they do every year. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Baraducci, please chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of items tonight. First of all, I'd like to make citizens aware that once again, our elderly are being hit with the telephone scams, and we were able to interrupt one the other day. We did get a recording of the caller, and I'm going to talk to Jared and see if we might be able to put that up on our community television station and let people actually hear. I would tell you, if you have any question about whether or not it's a scam, call us. We'll be glad to help you. We'll send somebody out to talk to you. But a good rule of thumb is, if they tell you you won, and they want money from you, it's a scam. Please remember that. The next thing is, the police public information page is up now. It's brand new. It's refreshed every three hours, and you can access it by going to the police department webpage, which you access through the city of Medina webpage. You can see all the calls, the incidents, and then if there's something that interests you, you can call the records room and request the actual report. The other thing is, we suffered a, well, I don't know whether exactly whether it was a lightning strike or just lightning in the area, ended up bleeding into our electrical system and our computer system, and we suffered some damage. Two of the computers and dispatch went down. We have assessed that damage. It looks like we're going to need to replace some routers and switches, and we're putting that together now. The good news is, though, our new computer aided dispatch, which, as you remember, is in the cloud, operated without interruption, and that was the big advantage, the one we brought it to you. So that, we're real happy with that. The last item I would, I would bring up again is that, as we get into the holidays, please be careful with drinking and driving. There's a big push on to buckle up or get a ticket, but there's even a bigger push to stop drunk drivers. And we're out, all our partners are out, and don't ruin a good holiday by drinking and driving. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Hannan, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to notify council and the public of an upcoming public meeting regarding our Brownfield Coalition Program. That's going to be May 21 at 6:00 PM at City Hall. It's an opportunity to learn more about the Brownfield Program. To remind the public, we have received a million dollar grant from the US EPA to complete environmental assessments on vacant and underutilized commercial and industrial properties. If you have a property which may fit our programs or have interest about a site in your neighborhood, encourage you to attend to learn more about the program. And it's May 21 at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items. In an effort to help ensure the safety and security of the patrons of the Rec Center, I would like to remind all non-members of the MCRC that our new ID policy is in effect. This policy requires that all patrons using a facility that are non-members will need to show an ID in order to enter the facility. Preferred IDs are driver's license, state IDs, student IDs for guests under 16 years to 13 years of age, passports and military IDs. Day passes will not be sold, day passes will not be sold to persons who fail to present a photo ID, and all guests 12 years and younger must be accompanied by an adult providing proper photo identification. We do now offer what we call a Rec Center non-member ID for $2. This can be purchased at the front desk after you supply us with proper identification and will suffice as your ID for access from that point on. Our new brochure is available online at www.madinarec.org and at the Rec Center, of course. We have lots of new and exciting programs for the summer, including our summer camp, which runs weekly for 10 weeks, from June 11 to August 17. It includes all types of trips from Amazon to the Cleveland Zoo Aquarium to Kalahari. Every week is a different trip. We have multiple week discounts available before June 1, and if you sign up for any six weeks, you receive a 10% discount before May 31. Lastly, just a quick update regarding the Healthways Silver Sneakers Program we have at the MCRC. This program now has over 1,100 local seniors getting free memberships and fitness programs at the Rec. This will take you less than a minute to see if you qualify. Just contact our facility at 330-721-6901. Give the helpful front desk staff your name and birthdate, and they can tell you if you're eligible. Also, please watch for the Healthways Silver Sneakers card in the mail, which is also proof of your eligibility. Then just come on in and sign up. For more information, you can watch a video on our Medina TV YouTube website, or go to our website at www.madinarec.org. And our next scheduled advisory board meeting is this Thursday, May 17 at 7:30 at the Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vogel, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I am pleased to report that the amount of roofing permits issued so far this year is way up. In related news, complaints about poor roofing work are way down. I would like to use this situation as another illustration of the value of a building permit. The Medina City Building Department began requiring re-roof permits in April of 2009. Before that time, we would often receive complaints about poor roofing work. By simply requiring a permit for re-roof, we effectively chased off many of the roofers who cannot meet our standards of professionalism. It was a positive development for the citizens of Medina and a change in policy that we were glad to implement. Of course, this scenario applies to all types of building projects. I want Medina citizens to feel confident that our efforts regarding building permit issuance and contractor registration will greatly reduce the possibility of future complaints regarding their projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is grilling season, and for that, we have new grills to be installed at Sam Massey and Reagan Park by field number four. We never had them at these locations before. We just recently constructed the new pavilion at Massey. But also, I'd ask the park users and the pavilion rentals to bring your table coverings or table cloths for the picnic tables. Right now, we're just seeing an increase in graffiti. The parks crew do go out and paint the tabletops to stain them to remove the graffiti, but we're just asking you to advise you to bring your table cloths in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to announce, last week, the Lake Road reconstruction project began in earnest, and on Wednesday of last week, we did close one lane of Lake Road. The maintenance of traffic plan that was implemented and will be consistent throughout the construction period is that Lake Road is one-way southbound only, and that's within the project limits, which extend from Lafayette Road south to the city limits, which is approximately sealy. In the area, in that area, you can only travel southbound, and the project's expected to last into November, December, so it'll be for several months. Also, last week, we did accept bids for two projects. Both of them were awarded to, by the Board of Control this afternoon. The first one is our 2012 Concrete Street Repair Program. We look to get started here in the next several weeks, and those are locations all across the city. And the other one was the Parkview Drive culvert. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Conwell, Acting Service Director.
My title changes every week.
Ah, just kidding.
I know, right? Over the past several weeks, the Service Department has received calls regarding the sanitation department, whether or not we pick up grass clippings. We do not pick up grass clippings, but if you have them, you can take them to the central processing facility, which is located at 8,700 Lake Road, free of charge. The sanitation department does pick up yard waste, such as branches, hedge clippings and garden waste on your regularly scheduled pickup day. Please make sure that branches are cut in four feet lengths and bundled securely with twine or rope. Bundles cannot exceed two feet in diameter. The water department will be continuing their hydrant flushing throughout the spring and summer months. The schedule's available on our website. Please keep in mind, discolored water may be temporarily present in your home and/or business. If this is the case, just flush cold water through a faucet until it runs clear. If you have any questions, you can contact our water service office at 722-9081. And lastly, while we have received numerous reports of high grass throughout the city, please be patient as we work through our process to address each complaint. The city's ordinance dictates anything over eight inches high needs to be cut. When a complaint is received, city personnel verify the address, and the property owner is notified of the violation and given a 10-day notice by certified mail to correct the problem. If the issue is not corrected after the 10-day period, the city sends out our contractor, and we cut it and assess the property taxes. If you have any questions regarding this process or any high grass complaints, you can contact my office at 722-9020. Thank you.
Thank you. Notices, Communications and Petitions, we have one, a transfer of a D5 liquor permit from Cana Limited, Cana Limited LLC, doing business as Cana, 113 West Smith Road and Patio to Kohler and Sons LLC, doing businesses, Times Squared, 113 West Smith Road and Patio. Move now to object.
Second, I'm not objecting.
Any discussion? The clerk please call the roll.
Colasor.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Unfinished business, we have non-introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the right front microphone and state their name and address so that it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. As discussed, we had the CIC discussion prior to this. You're welcome to talk about the CIC again, but we're going to have another opportunity at the next meeting if you'd like. So I open it up. Does anybody like to address council? Yes, Erica?
Thank you, Mr. President. Erica Graffin, representing the Auditor's Office. I have two items tonight. The first is that we held our 15th Annual Pet Adopt-a-thon on May 5, and after six of 50 groups reporting to us, we had 37 adoptions to date. We'll keep updating that on our website at www.madinacountyauditor.org. Also, in the past, we've been, I always talk about signing up our senior citizens and disabled persons on our homestead program, and up until very recently, we were only allowed to sign up persons that were actually entitled. We can now sign up a resident who is on the mortgage note. The mortgage note, however, is not a recorded document, so we won't have access to that. The mortgage holder would have to bring that to us, and then we will be able to put them on the homestead program as well. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council.
Name and address, remember.
Sure. My name is Dan Coleman, 715 Minor Drive in Medina. My comments are geared toward the CIC. I know we had a chance to talk about that evening, and I thank you very much for your time this evening, listening to the comments and for giving us a chance to give comments and concerns, et cetera. One thing I did want to comment, being that we didn't get to see the articles in incorporation till about two hours into that two-and-a-half hour meeting that wore all of us out. I wanted to go to one concern I have in the third area, which is the purpose for which incorporation is formed, under Section I. I don't know if everyone here is familiar, but 501(c)(3) is our organizations that do charity work. There are also 501(c)(4)'s, PACs, et cetera, and they're all nonprofits. Now, 501(c)(3)'s can get involved in politics, and they can do it and such through issues. And I was reading through the incorporated articles here, and it does bar them concurrent with the federal income tax, Section 501(c)(3) of the IRS code, that does bar us from supporting a political candidate for office, but I would ask that we look at barring it from backing any issues as well, because 501(c)(3)'s can legally dump unlimited amounts of money into nonpartisan issues, such as a school levy might be an example, or other things that would pertain to the city. And I think that, being that it's starting with taxpayer dollars, that's something we should put in to get started, and maybe down the road, when it does what you're, what we're all hoping it may do, and go to private funding, that maybe that can be revisited at the time. But I just ask that this work in conjunction, supporting the folks of our city and not having the CIC putting up an issue that would in possibility harm our rights or harm our city in any way. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Yes, sir.
My name is Keith Racy. I live at 908 Laurel Glenn's Drive here in Medina. Sorry. I thought somebody said something to me. I'm sorry. I arise to speak for the prevailing wage to be applied to the CIC. I know the sentiment at the Finance Committee was against it, and I think that they're trying to do something which is business-friendly, and I admire that, because obviously, business, communities, labor, we all need to work cooperatively. The word competition is used there often, over and over and over and over again. The thing, though, about just basing everything on competition, is that we leave out cooperation. It is because of my calling, I have a degree from Yale Divinity School. When I see people cooperating, both labor and management, I see that there are synergies there that increase value to the community. When we offer less than the prevailing wage, now, this isn't necessarily a union wage. Prevailing wage is the wage that applies in that community for that particular kind of work. When we offer less than that, it's an affront to my conscience when I go and see a person who is my age, who's working for minimum wage or working for $10 an hour, because I know if they have family members to support, if they have two or three children, they may be going back to the taxpayer for food stamps. And they also probably can't afford health care, which means they'll have to use the emergency room. So the taxpayer, through the CIC initially, is going to give a business money to provide gap funding, so the business can get a commercial loan. So on the one hand, the taxpayer is giving them money, and on the other hand, the taxpayer is also subsidizing them if they don't pay the prevailing wage. It is not only a matter of conscience, it's also a matter of utility. If I have to, as a taxpayer, subsidize the profits of a business because they don't pay a prevailing wage by giving the tax federal entity more tax dollars for food stamps, how is that increasing the wealth of the community? And if I, as a health insurance consumer, have to pay more money for those who don't have health insurance, so they can't afford it, how is that adding to community value, community wealth? So it seems to me that although we talk about competition, we're forgetting about cooperation. There's no place at the table for the CIC for labor. I don't see any labor representative allowed in the structure of it. There's no place at the table for a consumer. The council, of course, is duly elected, and council representatives, I take all of you at your word as being of good heart. I take that seriously. But if we could work cooperatively with the prevailing wage and with the labor people that are in Medina, we might have even more benefit to the larger community and not just to the private developer. Thank you for listening to me.
I thank you for your comments. Anybody else wish to address council? Mr. Schaefer?
Evening. Mr. President, my name is Eric Schaefer. I live at 6122 Summer Lake Drive in Medina. During my 22 years in banking, and specifically while serving on the Cuyahoga County Improvement Corporation Board, and later on the Travers Bay Economic Development Board, I witnessed firsthand the benefits, the many benefits provided by local CICs. They help the right projects. My view is having a local economic development strategy is critical to maintaining and building sustainable and healthy communities, and a Medina City CIC will give the community an additional economic development tool in its ongoing effort to attract and retain business, creating jobs and providing a growing tax base. A CIC can also attract private funding, and it is designed to be an inclusive economic development organization that works closely with county and state governments, but has the ability to act quickly on development opportunities. This public-private partnership can serve as an important advisory board that allows elected officials, community members, and business leaders the opportunity to work together to contribute to the area's economic development efforts. I want to offer my support and commend the Medina City Council for establishing the Medina City Community Improvement Corporation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Catherine Jones, and I'm speaking on behalf of concerned citizens of Medina County with regard to the issue of high-volume hydraulic fracturing, the new hydraulic fracturing. I don't know if you're aware, but Summit County just enacted a resolution, which I made copies to give to you. The city of Akron has a resolution for a moratorium on it. The city of Athens just passed a ban on the fracking of their water. Broadview Heights, which is highly fracked, has a lot going on there. They're having a city council meeting tonight to see about getting a citizens' rights ban, to get fracking banned in Broadview Heights. But what I'd like, I'd like to read you the resolution that the Summit County Council just enacted a few weeks ago, and it was drafted by Bill Snow. He's a former oil and gas company employee and a current Bath Township administrator. And it's a resolution urging the state of Ohio to enact reasonable regulations on the new hydraulic, high-volume hydraulic fracturing known as fracking, including the associated high volume of withdrawals of water, and addition of toxic chemicals and associated waste disposal operations, and to further urge the state to enact laws that return some regulatory authority to county and local jurisdictions over the new high-volume hydraulic fracturing, water withdrawals, uses of toxic chemicals, and associated waste disposal operations for the council, and declaring an emergency. This might be something you might want to look into checking out. I have, I have some doctors that would be glad to talk to you about the health and environmental issues. I know I met with the Medina County Health Department, but they didn't want to act on it at the time. I know Mr. Colasor mentioned that you all became council members to better the quality of the community, and looking into this issue, it's a very serious, dangerous issue right now. There's a lot of unknowns, and to slow it down or just have a, look into having a moratorium until it can be regulated where we know it's safe, because it will affect the property values, water, your health. People won't be able to get, banks are already not allowing mortgages on properties. You might not know it, but I have a map that I got from the Auditor's Office for all the townships and the city of Medina, and I updated it as of December 31, and I have where all the properties that have been leased for fracking are, and there's some in Reagan Parkway, there's some in the city of Medina, and all they need is 20 acres. They're sending leases to people that have two acres or five acres, so they can pool the lands together, so it's here. They're researching how they can frac more in Medina County. And if you, if any of you have gone to Broadview Heights and see what it's done there, it's very educational. But if, if I could meet with you later, maybe after the meeting, and see if we could set up a separate meeting, so I could give you more information on this and talk to you about it.
I think, first of all, if you can provide us with a clerk with a copy of the ordinance, and then we can, we can talk about it.
I will. I will do that right now.
And we'd have to do a request if we wanted to discuss that further.
I'll give it to you right after the meeting, in case anyone else wants to talk. Thank you for your time.
That'd be great. Any further comments or discussion?
Good evening. My name is Stan Sheets. I'm an attorney, developer, and entrepreneur here in Medina. My address is 225 East Liberty Street, Medina, Ohio. I represent several developers, companies that build, that you work with CICs all the time, and I'm here to pledge my support and ask your support of this upcoming CIC. I've worked with them in at least three counties here in Ohio, and a couple even out of state with clients that have multiple interests in other areas. And I would truly suggest to you that these have been very successful tools to guide the development, the way you, as council, and your zoning and planning commissions wish development to be guided, as well as to follow your various studies that you have done. I know that you've done a study on Smith Road, on the corridor study. I know you've done some other studies in, in the community. But by the city acquiring some of these properties and putting them within the CIC, it gives you that absolute control of how that development can go, so that somebody simply that's a quote rogue to buy a piece of property, to put something on it that you would not want, that still fits in your zoning, is precluded from being able to do that. I have seen over a period of time that this has been used successfully in many, many areas throughout the state of Ohio. It's been used specifically for types of developments where the community, the community has a specific desire for specific things to occur on the property, whether it be a need of the community or a desire of the community, but the plans are developed according to what your zoning and planning commission has defined, as well as what your comprehensive plan has said, as well as what your various studies have concluded. And it ensures that if you're going to do retail, or office, or mixed-use development, that that's the type of development will be there. It provides opportunities for you to incentivize, incentive, I'm probably saying that word wrong, but to provide incentives to developers to take a risk to do the type of development that you wish, because sometimes in a smaller community, like we're dealing here in the city of Medina, we're not dealing with hundreds of millions of dollars in, in construction. We're talking about a million or $2 million to be invested in a project, whether it be senior citizen housing, or targeted housing for a specific community itself, or whether it be something for the civic benefit. I remember, I saw something in one of the editorials about what would this, what would be a civic-type event that you would be sponsoring through a CIC. But that might be the building like of an orchestra shell, or a park area, but something that then is surrounded by other types of, of construction in the future, but where you provide parking, and this might be something that could go down in the area adjacent to Smith Road, like where the old hardware store was that was there, that is long gone. But other type of civic projects could be even relating to expansion of trails or trailheads, amphitheaters, public walkways, municipal sites, landscape boulevards. These are all things that fit within a CIC that can be guided and directed, so that the things that are surrounding the developments that you wish to go there all enhance the community and the, the quality of life here in, in the city. And I strongly support this. I know the vast majority of my clients would support this, and I not only represent clients that are for-profit, I've represented several nonprofits, both in Summit County, in, not in Medina County itself, Summit County, and in Wayne County, where this has been used also, where land has sometimes actually been almost given to them with infrastructure, but so that they could build what was needed to be put in that community, and will be in a position to take the risk to do so. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wish to address council? Yes.
I'm Mike Rose, and I just want to make a few brief comments with regard to the wage...
Excuse me, Mr. Rose. Your address, I guess. I mean, I know you're a business owner in Medina, but...
Yes, 23 Public Square, Medina. With regard to the wage levels, when weighing the merits of market wage versus prevailing wage, I believe new jobs are better than no jobs. And then to follow up with that, though, I do agree that everybody should be paid a fair wage, and the unions across Ohio have a long and proud history of representing their memberships effectively. Regardless of the CIC's existence, union locals maintain the right to enter into negotiations with a new enterprise once they come here. Let's get them here first. And I just wanted to, to share kind of a, a story. A hundred years ago, in this community, there was, it was a similar kind of debate, and people talked whether we should bring electricity here. Some people said it would make our lives better, it would create jobs. Others said, no, we'd put the candlemakers out of business. Imagine if we had taken a different path, where we would be. So, I think this is a very important issue.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wish to address council?
Good evening. My name's Maria Kipstol. I'm the Business Development Manager for the Medina County Economic Development Corporation, and really just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, and for all the comments that we heard, both in finance and then this evening at the city council meeting. But wanted to really echo a lot of what we heard from Mr. Sheets and from Mr. Rose. Bethany Dentler, who's the Executive Director for MCEDC, has been working with the CIC since its inception, and so on behalf of Medina County Economic Development Corporation, I wanted to convey our support, and also to address that we've really looked at some of the issues, and some of the prevailing wage stuff, and really, truly stand behind job creation, really believe that any jobs coming into the city are going to be of very strong benefit, and that the CIC really is the way to do that, and the tool for the city to be able to do that. And, so, wanted to also say that one of the things that we've talked about is any employee coming in really has the opportunity to step away from a job if they don't believe that it's a fair rate. So, really are 100% behind it, and very happy to be so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Okay, introduction on consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance number 83-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept two easements necessary for the Guilford Boulevard Storm Sewer Project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the city's Guilford Boulevard Residential Drainage Improvement Project, two easements from private homeowners to install neighborhood yard drains.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordnance 83-12 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 84-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept two easements necessary for the East Smith to Smoke Rise Waterline, Wheeling and Lake Erie Railroad Company project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, and I moved to add it at this time.
I second the emergency clause.
Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. The city's waterline project on East Smith to Smoke Rise and Concord Drive will cross underneath the Wheeling and Lake Erie Railroad. This is an easement from the railroad to allow us to install that waterline. We would like consideration for the emergency clause, since the project is under construction. The railway has approved our offer, and the quicker we can get it, the quicker we can finish the project.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colissar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colissar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordnance 84-12 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 85-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a jobs and commerce economic development agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Transportation for the West Smith Road reconstruction project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Rice? Is this you? If I can make it through the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is for the funding opportunity that we received through jobs and commerce for $240,000 to widen West Smith Road from the railroad tracks down to Lake Road.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colissar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordnance 85-12 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 86-12, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund advances.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the advance to cover the expenditure explained in the previous ordinance. The advance will be repaid once we are reimbursed by the grantor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colissar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordnance 86-12 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 87-12, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund transfers.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a transfer, not an advance. It won't be reimbursed. It's a transfer from the general fund to the parking fund. We do this every year to cover the costs of operations of the parking fund.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colissar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordnance 87-12 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 88-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 172-11 passed December 12th, 2011. Amendments to the 2012 budget.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's four amendments to the appropriations here. The first one is to cover changes to the cost of the city garage, and that was, the project was approved previously, but the appropriation is being approved now. The second one is $100 to cover refunds for water cap fees, and that's wherever, whenever someone overpays on a water bill, or their final gets paid twice, we have to make the reimbursement, but we have to have appropriation from council for that. So, we didn't have enough for this year, we're coming back for additional. The final two do, deal with the brownfield grant with the EPA.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Colissar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordnance 88-12 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 89-12, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund advances.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for an advance to cover the brownfield grant. It will again be reimbursed when the project, when the monies have been spent.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colissar?
Yes.
Ordnance 89-12 passes 7-0.
Council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Colissar?
Just want to take a moment to remind city residents about the Champion Creek Cleanup, which is Saturday, June 9th, and the event, really, the sign-ins start at 8:30 in the morning at Medina Community Church, which is located at 416 South Broadway. You can sign up there, coffee and doughnuts, and then we'll actually start the cleanup about 9 o'clock, and it'll go between 9:00 to 11:30, 12 o'clock, and then we'll meet back at Medina Community Church again for lunch. And lunch will be between 12:00 and 1:30. You can find out more information at the city website, or you can contact me via email. All my information is on the city website. The city of Medina will be providing trash bags, and providing dumpsters and things of that nature to put all the trash that we pull out of there. Make sure you dress for the occasion, and it just gives you an opportunity, we're going to focus on the downtown area, it just gives you an opportunity to see what hidden treasures we do have in the downtown. I wish I could say it was in better shape, it's not, it does need our help. So, I ask all residents to take a couple hours on a Saturday to come out and make a difference in the community. I'm going to pass this over to Mr. Hilberg. He is going to, on that same day, help us out on another tributary that actually runs in the west branch of the Rocky River.
We're going to do another cleanup the same time, concurrently with Mr. Colissar's. It's going to be at Bradway Creek, specifically between Foundry Street and Huntington. And if we have enough people and enough time, we'll continue east towards North Court Street. We're going to sign, meet and sign in at the parking lot off of Foundry Street, and then lunch will be also between 12:00 and 1:30 at the pavilion off of Huntington, Huntington Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I just wanted to thank everybody, the residents who showed up last week at the Ward Four meeting. It was a terrible weather night, but we still had a great crowd. I want to encourage residents, we're going to do these ward meetings again, starting in August. It's a great opportunity and a great forum, that's very informal, easy way to talk to council administration. I appreciate my fellow council members being there, and the members of the administration that were there, and it's just amazing to me, great ideas that we received at these meetings, and then how quickly the city was able to act on it. So, I appreciate the administration's help in taking care of some really great ideas that the residents brought to our attention during these meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
A couple things. One is the, also this weekend, the chalk art is on the square in Medina, and to promote the Champion Creek Cleanup, I'll be at the fire station with information and sign-ups. If anybody's interested in, in, while you're at, at the chalk art, I'll be in the fire station from, I think, 9 o'clock in the morning till about noon, if anybody wants to come up then and sign up. Further, you know, I'd like to compliment Kathy Jones, who came and talked about the fracking issue, and I know she's worked hard on it for months and months and months, and I've been at many meetings that she's been at, and she's provided a lot of municipalities and a lot of governments with, with important information, and I think it's important that we, you know, that we, we take our role, you know, in at least informing ourselves as a municipality to understand the implications, not, not just the negatives, the positives and the negatives of, of this, of this ongoing, ongoing issue. I also want to mention that my, my cable show that I worked on with Medina Access Cable, One American Town, the first one is completed, and it's, it's on, it's up and running, if anybody wants to see that. The first one includes a tour of the Tower of the Courthouse, as well as a pretty interesting walkthrough of Spring Grove Cemetery, which is an incredible place to walk through, and if you, if you spend any time in Medina, when you walk into Spring Grove, it's sort of like, it's much like Thornton Wilder's Our Town, because you recognize so many people, or the relationships of so many people that really and truly mattered to the town. And lastly, I want to compliment Medina City Schools. I've never been involved in anything in the school system that I haven't gone away with, a very positive, a very positive feeling, and I had the opportunity today to talk to some social studies classes about the history of Medina. And not only is it interesting to me, when you recount the history of Medina, the amazing things that we have accomplished as a city, and we continue to accomplish, but also the incredible things that go on in Medina City Schools, classroom to classroom to classroom, that we don't read about, or you might not, you wouldn't know about unless you were there, but the students know about them, and, and, and the job that the teachers perform. It was a very enjoyable experience for me, and I want to compliment the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comments?
Mr. Coin?
Mr. Simpson?
Real quickly, I'm proud to announce that Medina has been awarded a, pretty prestigious, there's only been 40 other of these awarded in the country this year, and that, and the there's only been 40 other of these awarded in the country this year, and that, and Mayor, I know you're thinking, what the heck is he talking about? I think you'll understand what I mean. Medina has been awarded a 5K, 5K, 5K run, 5K walk through the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation out of New York City. Stephen Siller was a firefighter for New York City during 9/11, due to the traffic. He was off-duty due to the traffic, couldn't drive to the Twin Towers when they were hit. He walked through one of the tunnels to get to the Towers. He perished, left behind quite extensive family, and returned the family and started this foundation initially to help survivors of firefighters, police, and EMS personnel. They've extended that to also include wounded warriors. And I'm going to give more information in the future, but I want to give the website tonight, even though the event is not going to be in Medina until September 8th, I want to give the website out. It's www.tunneltotowers.madina.org. You can go in there and you can, and see the history of Stephen Siller Foundation and, and the Wounded Warrior Foundation. If any of you happened to watch 60 Minutes last night, actor Gary Sinise, who played